Evening. Can we bring the work session agenda to order? The Stanton City Council August 8th meeting. I will entertain a motion for the consideration of the work session and regular meeting agendas.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the work session and regular meeting agendas as presented.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Mr. Kessinger, could you call a roll, please?
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And the first item of business tonight is a discussion of the Community Land Trust's strategy to address affordable housing. Ms. Bogart.
Yes, we have with us this evening, Mr. Dan Lehman. He is the Executive Director of the Community Foundation of the Central Blue Ridge, and he approached us about this concept. And he, um, we invited him to speak to you all tonight and answer any questions um, about the Community Land Trust concept. So, Mr. Lehman, I'll turn it over to you.
Very good. Thank you so much. Welcome. Uh, thank you, Merrick, Mayor Claffey, council members, for inviting me to speak with you this evening. Uh, the specific topic that will be the focus of my presentation is the Community Land Trust model um, as a tool for addressing some specific areas of concern in Stanton's housing market. I should note that I do not represent a community land trust, nor am I, I'm not employed by a community land trust, but I've been in discussion with community land trust leaders over the past couple of years, and I've been studying this model for its potential local use. I'll also note that the use of a community land trust is one of the recommendations um, in Stanton's, uh, for Stanton, um, as proposed in the new regional housing study commissioned by the Planning District Commission and completed by, completed by the Virginia Center for Housing Research in partnership with Housing Forward Virginia. To help set the stage for this introduction, I'll share two statistics that should be concerning to all of us. First, twenty-eight percent or three thousand of Stanton households are considered housing cost burdened. This means that they're spending more than thirty percent of their, their gross household income on rent or mortgage payments plus their basic utilities. These households are those that are at high risk of experiencing a housing crisis if they have some unexpected related expenses related to medical emergencies, critical car repairs, or even temporary loss of employment. And their housing costs burden largely because the housing that they can afford is not readily available to them in the community. Many of our working-class households in Stanton are earning less than Stanton's area median income. Um, households earning approximately seventy to eighty percent of AMI can only afford to buy a home for a hundred ninety-four thousand dollars or less. Anything above that places them that, uh, makes them housing cost burden. I'll note that the median home price calculated using twenty-twenty-two data for Stanton was two hundred and forty thousand dollars, well above that threshold. So, as a result, we have many Stanton residents who cannot access um, housing ownership within the Stanton market. And a check of the uh, active listings just yesterday showed that there were only three active listings in Stanton um, under one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. So, due to the lack of those, those options, um, these families, they continue to rent, which saturates the rental market, reduces available uh, units on the market and drives up those rental prices. They might even be looking, and sorry, this keeps moving. Uh, it means that uh, they may even be looking to purchase homes in other communities, which is increasing their commute time if they're a Stanton worker, um, and, and the related expenses um, related to that commute. They're also not building equity for their families. And we know that's a, that's a key tool for those families to break the cycles of poverty and housing cost burden, uh, or in housing, housing security. And also, that, that type of housing market really does not support the city's economic development goals. So, a tool that communities across the country have been using um, to overcome this issue since, since the late nineteen-sixties is what's called a community land trust, which, as I noted earlier, is a strategy that's being recommended within the recent regional housing study. Uh, community land trusts are independent nonprofit organizations, designed specifically to increase affordable, high-quality homeownership opportunities that are prioritized uh, for working-class families within the community and gives them the opportunity to begin that equity-building journey. Um, that also goes a long way to supporting uh, the economic development goals of each community. And I will note that this option would not have been available to Stanton even four years ago. Uh, it wasn't until uh, the Habitat for Humanity affiliates across the Commonwealth um, encouraged the creation of the Virginia statewide community land trust, which levels the playing field for municipalities across the Commonwealth to begin using this tool. For us to have set up a regional community land trust would have consumed considerable time and resources, probably over the course of three, three to five years, um, the funding for which there, there was no guarantee that it, that would be in place. So, why don't we talk a little bit about how the Virginia statewide community land trust works? And I'll, I'll run through this at, using an example of a single hypothetical home. So, in, in existing or newly-built market-rate home um, is earmarked for inclusion in the land trust. And I'll address shortly how the, the, the various roles for the city to encourage that to occur. The land trust purchases, purchases the land, but not the house, for a modest amount, typically one dollar. And then, the land trust staff income-qualify the first buyer of that house and all subsequent buyers of that house, uh, specifically targeting um, an audience that is important to this community. In most cases, they're looking for buyers who, where the household income is at approximately eighty percent of the area median income. These are our working-class families um, within our community, many of whom we call our essential workers. The um, land trust staff also spends time with those buyers, preparing them for success by taking them through home, homeownership education, because as I'll, I'll show you in a bit, many, most of them are first-time home buyers. And since these are generally market-rate homes, um, an initial subsidy is created utilizing federal, state, local, and philanthropic dollars to bring that purchase price down to the affordable level for that initial homeowner. The land trust then enters into that, into a ninety-nine-year ground lease with, with that buyer. And that ground lease, amongst other things, sets the home's resale price, tying that to area median income, ensuring that that home is affordable in perpetuity. And that is, I will, I will say, the secret sauce of a community land trust. Uh, there are other means of, of investing and making a home affordable, but very few means of guaranteeing that that home will remain affordable in perpetuity. And as we've seen in this, in, in the recent housing markets, um, housing prices, subject to the speculative market, can increase in price quite rapidly and, and become unaffordable when the intention was to have those as affordable options for our residents. So, I went looking for some proof of this model, and these two statistics really stand out to me. First, seventy percent of all land trust owners are first-time home buyers. Uh, this means we're moving renters to homeownership, and we're beginning them on their, in their equity-building journey. Also, over the course of all these years since land trusts have been in existence, eighty percent of land trust homeowners eventually progress onto purchasing market-rate housing of their own. Uh, this means that even though the resale prices of those homes are set, they're building sufficient equity to give them additional homeownership options. It also means that with, with those resale prices being set, that initial subsidy that's been created for the first purchase is paid forward to every subsequent buyer. Uh, that subsidy doesn't, never has to be recreated for the second buyer, the third buyer, and so on. So, as a result, homes that are placed into the community land trust create those, those affordable homeownership opportunities for buyers in perpetuity for many generations to come. Let, let's talk a little bit about the ways that this, uh, the city can encourage the use of this tool within, within the Stanton community. I'll note that there are a wide range of tools. You see, you see the, them noted here. And the good news is, the city does not, would not need to adopt all of these tools. Uh, the city could begin looking at low-cost, high-impact uh, tools, and then begin progressing onto utilizing other tools as this model is proving its value for this community. So, I'll be, begin with um, incentives that the city can utilize to encourage the inclusion of local homes in the community land trust. Um, a few, just a few years ago, the Virginia General Assembly adopted um, section fifteen-point-two dash twenty-three oh five-point-one of the Virginia Code that gives um, all municipalities in Virginia a toolbox of incentives um, that, over which they have authority to, to incentivize the inclusion of homes in community land trusts. That could include, and this is not a full uh, list of everything that's contained with it, within that code, um, but specific to the development of new homes, um, the, the city can provide uh, density bonuses for developers who are ensuring the long-term affordability of homes and with a priority for those homes being placed in a community land trust. Along those same lines, potential use of fee waivers. First, right of refusal for local entities, uh, such as a housing authority or other designees to acquire uh, new, new homes that are targeted for long-term affordability. And, and incentives also for developers to right-size homes. And I think this is also important because we have seen a steady decline in the average household size in America, which is now at three individuals per household. We have, within the city of, uh, actually, this is a Stanton Augusta-Wainsborough combined statistic. Eighty-one percent of households have three or fewer um, occupants. However, only about thirty percent of homes in Stanton Augusta-Wainsborough have two or fewer bedrooms. Um, so we're, we're building homes uh, much larger than our, our community needs. So, targeting those right-sized homes could also increase that affordability. Uh, in addition to incentives, uh, the city could look at its own zoning to see if, assess, does it, does it support this? And if it doesn't, are there some changes that can be made? And community land trust staff can give guidance to cities in what to look for within their zoning codes. Um, in lieu of having a lot of excess land for the city to work with and to see, see develop for housing, uh, the city could also look to the creation of a land bank locally. And land banks are used by municipalities um, to transfer derelict um, vacant properties or properties that might be subject to foreclosure due to delinquent real estate taxes. Transferring those, them into a land bank targeted for rehabilitation and recirculation back into the housing market, so we don't have vacant properties um, that could be utilized for affordable housing across our community. And then finally, there are funding options of, where the city can play a role in creating those initial subsidies uh, for the first, first buyers of a home placed in a land trust that could utilize federal and, and state resources, including grants from Virginia Housing, but also community development block grant funding is appropriate for this purpose. And finally, uh, the consideration of the, of the establishment of a lo, a local housing trust fund into which the city could transfer resources from a variety of sources um, that are generated locally, um, which um, couldn't, couldn't, again, come from a very, a variety of sources. So, you see, there's many different ways um, where the city can encourage the, the use of a community land trust for Stanton. And it can begin with things um, that feel very comfortable, and then mov, moving on to other means as this model shows its value. So, as a next step, um, I propose uh, setting up a meeting, and I'd be happy to help facilitate uh, for city staff, council representatives, to meet with the staff of the Virginia Community Land Trust, so they can speak more specifically about how this works, answer your questions, and speak directly to the various roles of the city. And I would also encourage council to think about the community land trust in the context of Stanton's broader housing needs. Uh, the land trust is, won't solve every housing need for the city. But uh, you, the utilization of a community land trust um, can relieve pressure on the rental market and, 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 and other, and have a positive impact on other parts of the housing market for, for the community. Then, when the city's ready, um, would encourage you to begin engaging um, other local partners in this discussion, which could include developers, lenders, um, existing property owners um, who may have interest in having, having their properties placed in the land trust in philanthropic organizations like ours that could bring financial resources and connections to the table. And then finally, creating a playbook for how the city might like to get started in the utilization of a land trust within our community, some benchmarks that you, that are important to you, and that, that could then dictate when it's time to begin using the next tools with, within the toolbox for the community land trust. And finally, I'll just note, um, Stanton is not alone in having um, extreme pressures on its housing market. The city does not need to solve these issues on its own. Um, there are many partners, like the Virginia statewide community land trust, the community foundation, and many others, who stand ready to bring um, their expertise, tools, and financial resources to contributing towards the goal of creating housing solutions for all Stanton residents. And with that, I'll end my presentation. I'll be happy to answer questions to the best of my ability.
This is a fascinating concept. We have, it's the second time, uh, Ms. Bogart and I have heard it, and it's, you know, it's unlimited potential here. So, I'll throw it open to members of council for questions.
So, you was going through it. I, I kind of didn't understand the process a little bit as you was going through it, how they would purchase the land for ninety-nine years? And then, you talked about, so suppose I would buy the house, purchase the property, the home, and then if I go into, they would bring it down to where it would meet my uh, income level through incentives and all those other things to bring the price down.
Yeah.
So, a three-hundred-thousand-dollar house can actually come down to where I could be able to afford it through incentives and dollars from different places. If that's the way it works?
Yeah, and I'll note that on, once a home is, is um, uh, associated with the community land trust, it's with that land trust permanently. And the, the, the process separates the value of the land from the home. So, the land trust owns the property, uh, the land, and the home buyer is purchasing the, the home, but not the land.
Right.
The ground lease um, is in existence for ninety-nine years between the land trust and the homeowner. And that land, that lease is inheritable, so it can pass on to another generation. But once it's sold to another uh, buyer, they enter into the next ninety-nine-year land lease, and so on and so forth. Um, so that, that, that home will continue uh, to be with the land trust in perpetuity.
So, how does one go from owning first-time home buyers? And if they, they can either sell that property and move on to something bigger and better uh, that they can afford? So, it moves, moves them up?
Yeah, so as the um, area median income grows, uh, that raises the, the potential resale price of that home. And again, it's based on a formula set by the land trust. And that, that formula is designed to give the homeowner um, equity uh, for the, for the time uh, in that property, but also make sure that that home price is not subject to the speculative um, real estate market.
That's what I think I was looking for, that, that part.
Just, just a quick question, and maybe I don't understand it all, but what kind, absent the home buyer, what kind of financial pressures is it putting on your group or whatever with today's current inflation that is skyrocketing and it's kind of crazy? And, I mean, is that putting undue pressure on your organization or this land trust to purchase this land? And I mean, kind of fill me in on that.
Yeah, and I'm not sure exactly how to answer that question. Um, it, it's, I haven't uh, broached that with the leaders of land trusts with whom I'm spoken about the role of inflation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I'm, I'm, I would imagine that that is built into their formula on how they calculate the resale price of the home. But I would defer to them um, on, for that answer.
Let's assume that a um, a three-hundred-thousand-dollar house has a twenty-five-thousand-dollar land cost. Is that reasonable? So, the city, the city's value for that land is twenty-five thousand dollars. Who's going to pay the taxes on that twenty-five thousand dollars in future years?
So, the, the land trust pays that real estate tax. Uh, the part of the ground lease is that the home buyer um, uh, pays a, a fee to the land trust, typically around three thousand dollars a year. So, that, that's factored into the, the sale price to ensure, ensure its affordability. Um, and that real estate tax is paid from that fee, so it makes the city whole on its taxes.
Yep. I mean, can, Brad, do you know, I mean, having, have, have some fingers in the habitat, what is the current average lot going for in the city right now?
All over the map. I, I mean, honestly, yeah, the tighter infill lots within the city um, are well above assessed rate. I mean, they're, you know, a lot assessed at twenty, could easily go for forty-five, um, depending on its desirability and utility connections and all that. Um, the, I mean, I think a lot of the questions I specifically have are for the community land trust people. Um, I know that so often with the, the land trusts, you have to go big or go home. And I'm, we're fortunate we have a statewide one, because it's very difficult for them to come out in the black without very heavy subsidies um, on that. But that typically comes from federal or state level, you know, on that. Um, but it, it's extremely difficult for small communities and definitely difficult for organizations to put these together uh, on their own. It just, it's almost never feasible in the, in the small scale. But, but we're fortunate that we have a statewide one going. And I, I think it would be great for us to specifically talk with them about this, if you guys could put that together for us. Um, but it's, it's, I feel like it's been talked about for many years for Stanton to get involved. But for whatever reason, uh, we just didn't have any particular organization to lead the charge on it.
Um, you know, I know, another connection that could be made to help answer questions um, that, that would be specific to what weighs on your minds is to connect you with the, uh, your counterparts in Culpeper and other communities that are, that have already begun utilizing the Virginia statewide community land trust.
That, and that was my question, is if this was established relatively recently in twenty-twenty-one on a statewide level, do they have a, what's the, do we know what the portfolio looks like in terms of projects so far? Who's participated?
I don't have exact numbers, but it, uh, they, they started modestly, so it's, it was launched in twenty-twenty-one. There is a ramp-up period of, of staffing and expertise that takes about three years. So, so the, the communities that have utilized the statewide land trust have really only begun in the past year, year and a half. Um, and typically, communities will start modest. Uh, they'll, they'll target a handful of homes and start building from there.
Yeah, it works.
Yeah.
And is it, do we know, yeah, a lot of these questions are probably geared more for them. But do we know, like, what typical, who, who's responsible for facilitating this? Is it the localities, like typically locality-controlled land that they're willing to purchase? Or, or nonprofits that are willing to, like, what is, what facilitates the transfer of this, of these lands to the?
That, that's going to be unique to each municipality. Um, take for instance, if, if Stanton had a lot of surplus land under its control, that would be one thing. But we know that Stanton does not.
Correct.
Um, so this would be looking at creating incentives for the development of private property. Um, because all, all developers have a process to go through with the city. Um, the city can, can build in those incentives into that process um, to, to encourage the development of homes that are going to be earmarked for long-term affordability is usually the, the phrasing that they use. Uh, the one entity that guarantees that long-term affordability is a land trust. Um, and then some other things, again, as I mentioned, looking at um, vacant properties that have gone out of, out of circulation, um, can be utilized via a land bank um, to get them into a land trust, so that's another technique. Um, the other thing, and, and I've had some conversations with um, somebody who owns rental homes in Stanton. Um, those homeowners, if they're, uh, at the time when they, they want to um, uh, relinquish those homes and sell them, um, could enter into a bargain sale with entities such as ours or the housing authority. Um, and those, uh, they'll get a tax deduction. Uh, the amount paid for that home can be set at the target resale price um, by the land trust. Um, so it can be put right, put back into circulation and put into, into the land trust, sometimes without having to create that initial subsidy.
Interesting.
Can I just, yeah, I've got a few, Mr. Lehman, thank you for, thank you for coming to explain this to us a little bit. I realize you don't represent the land trust, and you're here to just give us, uh, put our toes into the water. But I do have a few questions, and as I understand it, apparently there is one in Charlottesville. Just a brief look at the website today showed me that there is the Piedmont um, land trust. It's probably fairly new, but one that we could, you know, find out about. But um, I want the, I saw the word "community," the "community" on the website. The community does this, and the community controls that and makes the decisions through the leasing document. And, and so the word "community" is a bit malleable there. And so, who is the community that is making the decisions for those lease documents? And would that be, do you understand it to be the community would be whatever this city put together?
It, it, that's a great question, because again, historically, land trusts have been set up regionally by a community. Um, again, set up as a nonprofit organization, the board's populated by community members, so it's controlled by that community. With, with the advent of a statewide community land trust, community takes on a new meeting. So, I think it's, it's a, it's a great question for the leaders of the statewide land trust about what is, what is the role of the, the municipality in setting the terms for the homes that are, that are within Stanton, but within the statewide land trust.
Something else to think about, and I was glad that you brought up the, uh, the idea of, of taking derelict properties and putting them into this bank, because we only have these little pockets. I, I think we could do, like you said, infill. But um, looking at the community partners that we have, it sounds like it fits perfectly into our homes, our, our affordable housing strategy. But when we talk about keeping the price of the house at a certain level and affordable, it sounds like it's remaining below market value. And of course, as a homeowner who wants my home to appreciate, because that's what I'm hoping to pass on to my kids someday, how do you think that might affect comps as a, a person is trying to sell their home? I mean, it would, might bring down the value, the assessed values of homes in the, anything about that?
I did bring that up with the staff of the statewide land trust. And, and, and they say what, what they encourage and support, and they can guide the city on this, is how, when, when comps are being determined, um, can, can there be guidance put in place that excludes homes that are in the community land trust? Because even though the assessed value of that home um, is going to be at market rate.
Right.
Its resale price is going to be out there as a potential comp.
Good. That's already been.
Dan, one quick question. Are there any other community foundations that are involved in this?
Yeah, the, the Community Foundation for a Greater Richmond is heavily in. Yeah, the the Community Foundation for a Greater Richmond is heavily involved with the Maggie Walker Community Land Trust in Richmond. They 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 have supported it heavily for, again, for having a resource for creating those initial subsidies. That particular land trust also receives land and they take on the role of developer. And which has consumed a great deal of funds. So that's the one role that philanthropic organizations like ours can play. But I also see the Community Foundation playing potential other roles here in addition to to contributing to parts of that initial subsidy when those homes are purchased. If we do have property owners in Stanton who are willing to enter into a bargain sale, they need to do that with a nonprofit entity in order to get their charitable tax deduction. That's a role that we can play, which creates a renewable resource for us. We can purchase those homes at the target sale price, sell them, recoup those funds and and continue on in that mode.
Outstanding. You sure you don't want to do some development too?
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? That's a great, great presentation, and we really thank you for coming out and going over this with us.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. Liam.
Well, ran a little over on him. All right. Next item on the agenda is the introduction of the Executive Director of Valley Program for the Aging Services, Ms. Bogart.
Hi, Beth Bland is here with us this evening. She is, I believe, the newly appointed Director for Valley Program for Aging Services, and she's here to introduce herself and talk a little bit about the services that Vpass provides and answer any questions you have.
Welcome.
Thank you. Yes, I'm Beth Bland. I'm the Executive Director with Valley Program for Aging Services. I've been in this position for about a year now, but I've actually been with Vpass for 11 years. So I'm I'm not new to the organization. Valley Program for Aging Services, or better referred to as Vpass, greatly appreciates the support that the council and the city has provided to us over the years. We are a nonprofit organization, but also your local area agency on aging. And we've been serving the counties of Augusta, Bath, Highland, Rockbridge, Rockingham, and the cities within those counties for the last 50 years. Last year, Vpass assisted 578 Stanton City residents, which was a 9% increase every the year before. Our mission is to empower adults 60 years and older with the resources and opportunities they need to lead engaged lives. So what do we really do? I suspect you're familiar with our Meals on Wheels program. But do you know that Vpass is delivering five meals a week to an average of 90 city residents? Last year, Vpass delivered a little over 23,500 meals here in Stanton. Yes, the meals provide a needed nutrition, but the delivery provides a friendly exchange and a sense of comfort that knowing someone is going to come check on them. Today, I had the privilege of delivering meals. I met a woman that was 102 years old, a husband that had to quit his job to care for his 70 year old bed bound wife, a daughter who was taking her free day to clean her elderly mother's home. At each delivery, I was greeted with appreciation, joy, and excitement to be receiving the meal. One man even played his keyboard for me. But Vpass is more than a meal. We offer a variety of in-home and community-based services that meet the varied needs of our aging community members. City residents can enjoy time with friends, get some exercise, and enjoy a meal together at our cafes. Vpass provides rides to medical appointments, a grocery store, and other life necessary destinations. Our case managers can meet with individuals and their families to help connect them with the resources and services that they need to live independently. Our Aging with Confidence programs provide tools and information to support healthy aging. And our wide menu of caregiver services and dementia education services helps support city residents who are walking that path. Our certified Medicare counselors provide unbiased information to those who are preparing to turn 65 or who need to review their prescription coverage. And this is so that the beneficiaries can make informed decisions. And if you've gone through the process of applying for Medicare, you know that it's a maze that's not easily navigated. But regardless of how someone accesses our services or why they access our services, they are enveloped in a supportive network that continues to help them navigate the changes and challenges that come with aging. Now, this provides a brief overview of our services and what we offer. I'd be happy to answer any questions. But better yet, I'd invite you to visit our cafe or deliver a meal route so you can experience Vpass firsthand.
Thank you. And where is your cafe?
Emmanuel Episcopal Church.
Okay. In Freder.
I'm sorry?
Oh, in Freder.
You know what? I believe so. I we are newly in this location. Any other questions?
No, I just want to make a comment. Last year, you all did to help bring awareness to Meals on Wheels. You had community members deliver meals.
Community Champion Day.
Yes, Community Champion Day. So I was one of those.
Oh, great.
And that was my first time. And it is so rewarding, but the only thing that happened right, we me and another person was together. And when we got finished our route, we noticed that we had too many milks left. And I looked at her and she looked at me and I'm like, did we do something wrong? And then we realized that we was giving out two meals and we only gave one milk. So we had to go back.
Bless your heart.
And the thing about it is they were they were so understanding and grateful that we did come back because those people rely, people, our seniors rely on that. The ones that can't get out and, you know, get their meals, they rely on the meals and also on the milk too. So we did go back around, started where we ended and went back around to every house and gave them their milks. But you all didn't do that this year. Is that it was just something that you tried last year?
It typically happens every March. That's our the time of year that we have our campaign to bring awareness to senior hunger and social isolation. And this year was our 50th anniversary year. And so thing our our normal schedule went a little haywire with getting ready for our big celebration that happened in May. But look forward to it next March.
So that means look forward to, you know, going out there and delivering a meal to. Another thing I just wanted to bring up, you all started Vpass was dementia friendly. And that that program is so awesome is just bringing awareness to businesses and churches about, you know, people that do have dementia and how you make it more aware for for them and how you make it more friendlier for those that are diagnosed with dementia and bringing that awareness out. And that is good because you do, we did presentations at different places at different times just to bring the awareness that there are people in our community with dementia and they don't have to stay at home. So when we bring people out, we just want to make people aware, like in a restaurant, out in the stores and businesses that, you know, if you see somebody that, you know, that doesn't fit who you think they should fit, just be more kinder.
That's a that's a great description. And our dementia friends and dementia friends at work program has been very popular. And you're exactly right. It's intended to help people have a better basic understanding of dementia and what it is and what it's not. And to have learned the tools and ways to better communicate with people who are living with dementia. So it is a powerful program.
Michelle, anything?
No, sir.
All right. Well, thank you for coming out and letting us figure figure out who Beth Bland is. It's a pleasure to have you in the community and thank you for everything you do.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we're to an update on Stanton Augusta Waynesboro Metropolitan Planning Organization Regional Long Range Transportation Plan in Process.
That is a mouthful.
It's a mouthful. We have, no, I'm not, I'm gonna say Saw MPO.
Saw MPO.
I'm gonna and and so we have some folks from the Planning District Commission here who are going to talk about this item. And Paula, would you like to introduce yourself?
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you so much, Leslie.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm Paula Malister. I'm the Director of Transportation at the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission. We have a lot of very long acronyms, so we will shorten those. And with me tonight is Gareth Bartholomew. He is one of our transportation planners and he is helping with this project. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight to talk about the long range transportation plan and what we have in store for our public engagement phase that will be kicking off this Monday. If you're not familiar with the Saw MPO, we are the regional transportation planning body for the cities of Stanton, Waynesboro, and the urbanized portion of Augusta County. The Saw MPO has a policy board and a technical advisory committee that meets monthly to direct planning activities within the transportation realm. Mr. Arrowhead is actually our elected representative for the city of Stanton, and he is also our policy board chair.
Very good.
The MPO conducts a range of planning activities from short range planning to long range planning. With short range planning, we're typically doing some planning studies, small area studies, working with engineers, building out cost assessments and looking at ways that we can fix some small projects or fix some areas with small projects and then working with our federal and state partners to help get those studies funded and help get those projects funded. And then for long range planning, we have the Long Range Transportation Plan, which is what we're here to talk about this evening. The Long Range Transportation Plan outlines the region's current transportation needs and anticipates future needs over a 25 year period. It is also a financial plan as the list of projects that will make it into the final document are fiscally constrained by projected revenues over the period of the plan. This LRTP is updated every five years, and as of May, we have kicked off this next round of updates, planning through the year 2050. The first phase of the plan is to create a community vision for transportation in our region. We collect input from the public, from community stakeholders, and all of our transportation partners to ensure that the information that we collect helps inform decisions about projects that will be included in the plan. This input is so important to us because we want to make sure that the plan represents the needs of all members of our community. As part of this year's update, we are specifically emphasizing equity and participation. And not only do we want to engage more stakeholders than ever, we want to engage a more diverse group of stakeholders. In order to accomplish that, we've built a robust engagement campaign with hopes of reaching members of the community who we may have missed or overlooked in past planning processes. There are many different ways that you can participate as a member of the community. And we have a lot of things going on in the next couple of months. The first thing that will kick off on Monday is our Visioning Survey. That is the point and opportunity where anyone in the Stanton, Augusta, and Waynesboro region can submit their vision for the community for the next 25 years and express what their transportation priorities and needs are. The phone or the the survey platform is online, but it is also very mobile friendly. So you can take it right on your smartphone. There's a mapping exercise where you can drag and drop icons to indicate problem areas. So you may be able to say there needs to be a sidewalk connection here and drop a pin there to describe that. Or this intersection is dangerous and here's why. So not only are we collecting quantitative data that indicates those areas, we're also getting input from the people who use those roads on how that impacts them. To get the word out about the survey, we have a number of other activities going on, such as these informational briefings to our community partners. And on August 28th, we'll be holding a live webinar featuring Mr. Arrowhead as well. So you will be well represented in our process. The webinar will be the webinar will be held live over lunchtime so that people can attend. But it will also be recorded and posted on our website for people to replay at their leisure.
I know.
Play as many times as you want.
Well, we'll have to get a count on the number of views that we get.
Her IP address.
And we'll report that back after. We will also have a ton of pop up opportunities in the community so that we can go out and meet our community members where they are. You will probably see Gareth's face around town quite a bit during the month of August and September. He will be at the farmer's market on Saturday morning. He will come out to some of the downtown businesses along Beverly Street and Central and the main corridors in downtown, popping in and talking with folks and sharing some handout material that they can use to share that message with the people they interact with. And of course, the information for the whole process will be static on our website. You can download flyers, postcards, any kind of information to share with your groups. And we have an email subscription list that you can sign up for to receive updates. Even with all of these opportunities to participate, we know that there are still groups within our region that have we have difficulty reaching with these traditional forms of engagement. The marginalized populations in our communities don't often engage with these processes for very various reasons. They face barriers to access, barriers to engagement, and sometimes trust and fear of what the process is about. They're not comfortable with what we're talking about. They don't know somebody. It's not a welcoming process for someone who's not been a part of these things before. So in an effort to better understand what those barriers are and to establish ways to overcome them, we are launching a series of community consultation sessions. Those will kick off on Monday, and we have invited 120 curated individuals within the community. We reached out to city and county staff and asked for their input on who we should include in this list. So people like members from Vpass, organizations that serve populations in our community that we don't have a current relationship with. Of those 120 community leaders, we have many of them signed up for these sessions that will be holding every hour, 45 minute long sessions capped at eight people. So we can really have some decent conversation with those members and really get to understand what the barriers are to the community members that they serve and how we can overcome them by partnering with them and building a bridge where we are connecting to someone that they know and they trust and they feel comfortable with. Many of the people who have signed up are faith leaders, people who work in nonprofit organizations, and members of the education and healthcare community. This is the first time that we've taken this approach, and we're really hopeful that not only will this help us through the LRTP process, but it'll also help us build those relationships so that when someone else comes and asks them for their feedback. I know Stanton is getting ready to kick off your comprehensive plan update, and you will probably have surveys as well, that hopefully these people who have not previously had their voice heard will feel a little more comfortable coming to the table and speaking up or filling out a survey or asking for an accommodation if they need one so that they can be a part of the process. And we'd also like to call on you to help us spread the word about the LRTP and these opportunities for engagement. As elected representatives, you are also leaders in our community, both influential and trusted among your constituents. On Monday, we'll be sending out an email, you'll be all included on that, announcing the release of the survey. And there will also be a toolkit included in there with curated social media posts, suggested wording that you can use to make those posts, flyers that you can post, postcards that you can hand out. And we hope that you'll use some of those toolkit items to share with the people that you have in your circle of influence. And we are always happy to come and talk to any groups who would like to have kind of a briefing like this beyond just the elected officials. If you have a church group or an organization that you work with that you think would benefit from this, please give us a call and we're happy to come and talk to them. And that's all I have for you this evening, but I'm happy to answer any questions. And I want to thank you again for your support of transportation in our region and for allowing us to come here tonight and speak to you.
Thank you for coming. Brad, do you have any comments? And we got to get you started here.
Well, let's see. No, it's we actually, you guys ran us through that, the process of the whole thing of going online. And it's it's a really easy system to use. And like she was talking about dragging and dropping, say, there's an intersection with difficulties, you know, in vision or something like that. You can you can mark it on there and great to use on mobile as well. So I So I'm hoping it'll, once a few people do it and see how easy it is to, you know, get your comments across, they'll, they'll get more people doing it as well. And I also bugged them about Middlebrook Trace, adding the spot there and gave us an update on that as well.
Yeah, absolutely. So the city reached out to us and let us know that there's a new development going in or is already being built over at Middlebrook Trace and, and further out Middlebrook Road or Middlebrook Ave. With a lot of housing that is going to target low-income areas, people that we anticipate may be transit-dependent and how important it was for us to add a transit stop to that location. So we worked with Rodney and our BTAC, our Transit Advisory Committee, to get a stop organized and proposed and approved by the BTAC. That stop will be going in on Middlebrook at the first Middlebrook Trace apartment location. And that was just a quick fix to make sure that we could get something in in time for the developer to get moving with that, that process. But we will be looking at how we can reroute the existing routes to go deeper into Middlebrook to serve all of those townhouses and apartments back there. The, the routes in Stanton are a little tight right now with, with all the stops that they have. So we recently implemented a new data tracking system that will allow us to pull stop utilization by each individual bus stop. We can see if there's a bus stop somewhere that no one is using, maybe we take that off the route and allocate that time to something that could better serve the community. But yeah, it is a, it's coming soon. I think September, October, that should be on the routes. It's been approved. We're working with our transit providers to get the drivers up to speed on the new directions and we'll improve it even better once we have a little bit more time to look at the system as a whole.
Do you, do you have a, if you said it, I apologize. Do you have a, maybe a ballpark figure of how many citizens last fiscal year that Saw MPO took care of or helped?
Oh, gosh. We have so many projects and programs. Adam might actually be able to answer that better because he was representing the Saw MPO from a VDOT perspective during that time. But the projects that we've included in the LRTP in the past have ranged everywhere from bicycle and pedestrian connections, adding sidewalks and bike lanes to intersection reconfigurations for safety improvements, and then also transit amenities and transit access. So the, the current LRTP is good through FY '24, which would be the end of this year, and that is out on our website. You can see all of the projects that were included in that. And any projects that were included in that that were, that have not been funded or have not moved forward automatically get added to the pool that we will consider for adding into this next cycle as well.
Okay. Adam, she set you up. You wanna say anything?
I'll just say, yeah, I was very heavily involved in the last update through VDOT and we had a lot of success over the past five years of getting a lot of the identified projects funded. So there is a lot of room to fill in and add new projects based on need. So I'm excited to see what this update looks like.
Okay. And our, our last LRTP update, we had about 400, I think 300 or 400 responses to our survey and we're hoping to at least double that this time around. And a lot of the, the survey responses we received last time were from a, a pretty narrow demographic. They were mostly women, they're mostly in the city of Stanton or the city of Waynesboro, and they were usually of a higher income than the average citizen. So while we value their input for sure, we want to make sure that the plan is representative of the whole community. And that's why we're really taking these proactive steps to try to reach more people this time.
And from a different-
Josh, maybe you could put it out on the city website.
I was gonna say, there is, Augusta County is updating their comp plan now as well, but they might be, they're further along in the process, but we're just getting underway. There might be opportunities for collaboration to get, spread the word on this public outreach because it's always better, I feel like you get much more participation with one big ask instead of a bunch of little asks.
Yeah, we've actually worked directly with planning staff at Augusta County because they have asked, they've sent out a number of surveys throughout their comp plan process and we don't want to be asking the same questions over and over again. So we've curated our list of questions so that we are asking things that were not already, data that was not already collected during that process. But we also have permission from the county and from groups that we've worked with to use their data in the process of this plan as well. So we'll be able to take the information they collected through their really robust public engagement phase for the comp plan and make sure that those sentiments are included. If they're not, also echoed in our data set.
Very good. Any other questions from council? Well, we want to thank Paula and Garrett for coming out tonight and look forward to the survey. And we'll be checking to make sure that all members of council fill out their survey.
A hundred percent. Homework.
Thank you again for your time this evening.
Appreciate it.
Hopefully everyone stays dry on their way home.
Yeah. Try and save. That might be tough.
And I will entertain a motion for going into a closed session.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to enter a closed meeting for the discussion of the performance of the city manager and the city attorney pursuant Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Edwards. Mr. Kessler.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowhead.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We will return at 6:59. Good evening. We're coming back out of closed session, a little administrative duties.
Counselor Woods.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I move that council reconvene in an open meeting and certify to the best of each member's knowledge that only lawfully exempted public business matters were discussed and only public business matters as identified in the closed meeting motion were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
Thank you. A motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Robertson. Mr. Kessler.
Mr. Arrowhead.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell. Aye. Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you all. And that brings us to the seven o'clock starting of our regular meeting. And would everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
We pledge allegiance to the United States of America. It's in the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What did you say?
And the invocation moment of silence is brought to us tonight by Counselor Woods.
Well, thank you, Mayor Claffey and members of council. I'm gonna take this time just to thank each and every one of you all, Mayor Claffey and members of council and staff for the prayers during the last council meeting that we wasn't able to attend and for my surgery that I had that didn't know I was gonna have one. So I just want to take a moment of silence right now for the hurricane, all of those that are being affected by the hurricane and our children and students going back to school, that this school year be productive one, a safe one, and that they will be protected because we already have gotten one bomb threat called in Waynesboro. So we just want to take a moment of silence for them, our children, students all participating in schools, whether they're starting at head start all the way up to college, college level. And then for those that be affected by hurricane, either it's Debbie or-
Debbie with a Y.
Debbie, yeah.
That's what I thought it was, Hurricane Debbie. So will you just do a moment of silence with me, please? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to the mayor's report. As far as the mayor's report goes tonight, we're gonna run a very short, fast meeting because of the impending storm that's coming. We're trying to keep everything to a minimal. It's not our traditional thing. So my mayor's report is extraordinarily quick. I attended a tourism advisory board meeting this morning. I met Darren Smith, the new SDDA director is here. And so everybody wish him a warm welcome. Also found out that the West End is having, the West End Business Association is having a meeting next Tuesday, August 13th, from six to seven out there at the EMS headquarters out there on East Beverly, on West Beverly, excuse me, on permeable pavement. And that's an interesting concept. So looking forward to that. And does anybody else have anything real quick?
I'll just, real quick, thank everyone that came out, participated and volunteered for the United Ways Stuff the Buffs Back to School Supply Drive this weekend. I helped out Sunday and it was, we survived a 45-minute downpour, but it was a lot of fun.
Excellent.
I said, I think, I'll go back real quick. Back last month, I did get to go and attend with Adam. Did I tell, did I already tell about that, about the 100th anniversary of, of?
I said last council meeting that you did a great job with the proclamation.
Well, thank you, thank you. And then the other thing, and Alice said, unfortunately, I was unable to attend. I had a little medical procedure, knew it was gonna happen, just didn't know when. They called me up and said, show up. So anyway, I was, couldn't make it here that last time. So, but I thank everybody and for the prayers that y'all offered.
Well, we're glad to have both of you back. And of course, we've lost another member, but she's, she's on vacation in the Outer Banks and not having her good sun week, I don't think.
Yeah, that's not too big the wrong time there.
Anything else real quick? Let's, let's proceed rapidly onto the consent agenda and I will entertain a motion.
I, I'm moved to prove the consent agenda is presented.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded by Mr. Kessler.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowhead.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell. Aye. Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Excellent. All right. And that brings us to the discussing of city council members' salaries and asking Mr. Blair to explain this to us.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Claffey and councilors. Mayor Claffey approached the city manager and I and asked us, I guess, a few weeks ago that he had read that some, about some state legislation and just wanted to provide an update to the council. This past session, the General Assembly enacted the ability for cities to raise counselor and the mayor's salary by certain amounts. You may or may not know counties have no limits to what they may pay their members, but there are limits in the state code for cities. Stanton's in the population bracket that would raise counselor salaries to 22,000 and the mayor to 24,000, it's up to that amount. In order to effectuate such an increase, you would need to hold a public hearing and adopt an ordinance. Unfortunately for you all, the way that the legislation came about, became effective July 1st, well, you have to hold the public hearing and enact the ordinance at least four months before the election for council. So that was not going to be possible for this council. But if the next council or this council wants to enact an ordinance for a pay raise, it would be effective July 1st of 2027, since you would have to wait for the next election of city councilors. So it would be effective July 1st of 2027. You can raise the salaries up to 22,000 for councilors and $24,000 for the mayor. Mayor Claffey had asked when your current salaries were set. We found out that was in the year 2000. That was when this was set, so 24 years ago. You have been at the statutorily maximum to that point, but again, this past session increased those amounts. It is also worth noting that school boards are allowed to raise their salaries to the city council limit. So if you were to enact this and it became effective July 1st of 2027, they could also raise their salaries up to the amounts that the council would earn. So with that, I mean, it's certainly not a pressing item, but the mayor did want me to bring this to your attention.
So, um, Mr. Blair?
Yes, ma'am.
So on here it says the previous pay limits were 13,000 per year for the mayor and 12,000 per year for council members. Who was that referencing? That wasn't referencing the city of Stanton?
Well, the Sid, there were, those were the limits.
Oh, that was up to?
Up to.
Up to?
Yeah.
Okay. And then on the back that we have the population and the annual salary, we are well, I just want to point out, we were well below our population in the set amount. Because it says for 20,000 to 34,999, it was 12 to 13. And that was the set?
Right.
But it's still up to?
Up to, up to.
Okay, so that, so 13 and 12 would be the highest that you can go?
Right.
Okay.
But, but with this legislation, you can now go up to 24 and 22.
I understand it now.
It's as high as it could have been-
Yeah, it's as high.
Before July 1st, right?
Yeah. It couldn't go no higher, so.
Just, just curious, wouldn't, do we know when the 13-